... I'm playing with the Union's Union flag, United States of America, and due Republic which stands one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is proof of the minutes for the monthly meeting June eighteenth, two thousand twenty? Any questions on the June eighteenth meeting? The motion for approval of the minutes?
Aye.
The second target follows in favor? Aye. Motion approved at three minutes of the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Okay, visitors comments, we're gonna start with Paul from Witschowski. You just wanna, like we talked about down here with the big, mostly the problem with some of these drug dealers and...
Yeah, well, just...
What's the state police, I guess it's the warrants out?
Yeah, I was talking with him, um, just so you guys know, we have a couple people we're looking for. I mean, if you guys see him, he could help us, it'd be greatly appreciated. One of them is Gary Haynes, um, we do have work for him as well as probation. So, any help you guys can provide would be great, and trying to get him. Dylan Carnehan is another individual that we have warrants for.
What's his first name?
Dylan Carnehan.
Dylan.
Yeah, he used to live behind, uh, was it the truck there he said?
Yeah, sure. His mother was American when he did him go there.
Um, yeah, the, um, I know, Alicia's, the Sidemakers, where I was, you're familiar with all them, they live on Clark Street here. Um, Alicia's been driving a white Mustang, we pulled it over multiple times, we arrested, um, like Jason Burkett for DUI in a vehicle. That's another one, if you see him.
What's the last name?
Burkett.
Burkett.
Yeah, um, but the Mustang, there's nothing valid on it, so if you guys happen to see that and you wanna call it in, we have somebody in the area.
I got a white Mustang.
What's that?
He does well in town.
We could take him.
I seen Jason Burkett yesterday on the truck.
And I don't know if I currently have any, uh, warrants for him, but like you said, if you see him in that vehicle, that's not, that vehicle's there. I don't think there's any valid about it, so, um, like I said, if you guys wanna call that stuff in to us, we're more happy to come down and check it out along with we have, you know, somebody's in the area. I mean, we're busy, obviously, you know, on calls and we can't, but like you said, any help from you guys, especially those first couple, Gary Haynes and Dylan Carnehan, because they're, they just keep committing crimes, so I mean, they're...
Were they traveling together?
No, they're, they're two, uh, they're two separate, but, um, Gary is definitely in drugs and like you said, I would like to get him as soon as possible. He just fled from one of our troopers, um, on two fifty-five and then fled behind the family dollar there on foot.
What kind of vehicle did he have that day?
He had a truck and we took it, so he has no truck.
Was that a silver Dodge Dakota?
No.
No, it was a Ford.
Well, he's associated with Sidemakers.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Cause he, he almost hit me head-on in Cleveland one day, this is a couple months ago, there was a trooper behind him. He wasn't pursuing him too diligently because of a residential area. I moved way off and burned it out of the way and then the trooper's like five seconds behind it.
I got you, what was he driving then?
It was a silver Dakota with the left front thunder missing, looked like it went through that little bear be...
Oh yeah, that's pretty much everything he drives usually. Um, but I don't think, as far as I know, he doesn't have access to any vehicles right now. Well, there's one, there's a Ford F-150, it's blue, um, I think it's a thirteen, uh...
Year model thirteen?
Yes. Girl with blue hair driving, but they've been together recently, so if you guys see them, please call us. Like I said, I wanna get him off, off the street.
Actually, you see Gary...
And that's the thing, he's getting more and more reckless. And he's, we had that one, then he was with this blue Ford down on Redwood, and our trooper showed up, he took off on foot again. Well, our trooper had to check the person in the truck, obviously, to make sure they weren't gonna shoot them, right? You know, by the time he got cleared that, Gary's long gone. But he's becoming, you know, very reckless and like you said, I don't wanna see him hurt somebody else.
That's what's gonna happen, yeah.
Because he, like you said, he's using, I mean, we know that for a fact, so obviously, you do that, you get all kinds of erratic behavior, so...
Yeah, I heard some talk about this Haynes, that he OD'd a few times, they, uh, I don't know who supplied him with Narcan and brought him back to life.
His girlfriend, Kerry's...
Why don't we put him in the Narcan, I was so crazy.
They'll, yeah, they'll get it, so, but now, what's he, what's he have? I think right now he only has the four wheeler.
He's running that red Ford, the one we jammed at the fire hole. That's what he's traveling on most of the time.
It's a red Ford pickup?
No, red four wheeler.
No, four wheeler.
Well, four wheeler.
Yeah, like you said, we took that red truck, and so I don't think he has access to any more vehicles, but now he is riding this four wheeler. So if you guys see him, please call, like I said, don't get upset like we don't get down there. I mean, we, you know, like tonight, there's, there's three of us on, so I mean, you know, we'll be spread out.
These guys need help, you're spaced out pretty far.
Yeah.
And what about if we detained the suspects?
No, let us do it, yeah, I don't want you guys to do that. Yeah, just, just a phone call would be more than appreciated, we're trying to get him, so...
Do you see, I mean, he's going up Cleveland, going towards your way, or... I said we confirmed what, we could go, come out with...
We were running between, what, the Sidemakers on the corner down over here and the ones that fly on Lincoln Street.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Constant.
Do you see them constantly? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I see the one that's traveling.
There's also a couple other things I can talk to afterwards.
Yeah, if you would like to, sure, yep, yep, and then, um, and like I said, this, this Dylan Carnehan as well. Um, I believe he is operating his girlfriend's white BMW, I'm almost sure it's a BMW, um, don't hold me to that, I know it's a white, um, sedan. But I think we have two warrants for him, I'm pretty sure Dewey's has a warrant for him, and like I said, he's just, he's gonna keep committing crimes. He's the one that cut the cat converters off of Denise's garage down here, the vehicle.
He broke into Trudy's storage shed.
Yep, so, um, he's another one that, yeah, if we can get him, like I said, because it's guaranteed he's gonna commit some more crimes. So if we can get, get him locked up now, it'd be great, so...
That's like you said, you see these people around and just call the barracks?
Yeah, just call, call the station there and say, hey, um, uh, I'm aware that this person has a warrant for him, they are right here right now.
Do you have pictures?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Should've, right?
Yeah, I was like, yeah, I didn't, yeah, yeah, there you go. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much, and like you said, we're aware of these, so you can set up most of the, the problem people down here. Um, but those are the, the big warrants I have, that if anybody can help with, you know, call in.
Officer, ask your question?
Sure.
Cause there's some place where they, where they go up on, up on Dr. Hill, yeah? Because, uh, my wife now up a couple of mile every night on Cleveland Street. And she remarked to me a couple of times about these kids in the hood where they're dressed up blue hair. So apparently, they're riding up there for some reason.
What were they on there, was it, were they...
On four wheeler.
Four wheeler, okay, yeah. Yeah, this girl that he's with had shades, side, side for her hair, shade, and she's got long hair and it's blue.
Blue hair, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, my wife commented to me that, cause that girl's got blue hair. And a couple times out there past us, riding the four wheeler, and they're going up Cleveland Street, up and around the hill, you can hear them go around the hill.
I'm not aware anymore that they're going up there, sir, but I mean, if you, if you come across or you see something, you know, if they're meeting in a certain spot, you know, to do a deal or whatever they're doing, if you get that, please call up and just let us know. What we usually do with that kind of information is, um, our PCOS will take that and they'll send out an email to the whole station saying, you know, basically just, you know, like drug information. They'll say, hey, this individual noticing, um, uh, you know, an odd amount of vehicles parking at this location throughout all hours throughout the night. You know, then it, we'll send it out to the whole patrol units, those guys are aware, you know, and, um, that's how we'll try and combat some of this stuff, but, um, yeah, otherwise, like I said, them, them two people, if you guys can help us, I, we would greatly appreciate it, so...
How long is the list of the things that they have done around here? Like one, three or four situations they've been into, or...
This, Gary Haynes?
Yeah. We all have enough time.
Yeah, that's all I have in mind, dude.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's, it's just a matter of time with him, so, yeah.
Anything else, anything cordial?
Uh, nothing I can think of, I mean, does anybody have any questions for me with, for anything? I'll try and answer for you.
I do, do you have, are you aware of any drug bosses down here? Cause I, I heard gossip about them being in some of these, uh, low income houses, what do you call those?
The HUD?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, nothing that is sticking out to me right now, um, it's not saying there isn't, um...
Force is the hotline.
Force?
Force.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, if you wanna talk to me after, you can, or whatever you can...
I don't really know much, I just heard that, so I just wondered if you all were aware.
Well, in force, I take care of Spruce Street, there's nothing going on in there, I walked that close myself.
Okay.
So you can...
Do you want to move anything, anything else before the corporate leaves? As I said, you don't have to stick through the whole meeting.
Right. Good job. Do you have a question?
Thank you.
All right, appreciate you.
Well, it's nice seeing you guys and, um, like I said...
We appreciate your service, always good.
Thank you very much, it's nice to hear that, especially with everything going on.
Well, it's combat zone out there.
It is, yeah. So thank you guys very much, and if you have, ever have any problems, feel free to call us, we'll help you the best we can, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. Nancy, you might as well, sir, anything else?
Yes.
Visitors calling.
Oh, visitors calling, okay. I don't know anything about the water authority, except that I didn't get any call about boiling your water or not using your water, and I wanna know why that was. I don't know, just somebody after initiated that.
I knew there was a break.
I can tell you something about, the robo-call system was faulty, I guess it's like automatic, whatever it is, and it was faulty that day. Cause there was a lot of people never got calls.
Uh, I was up there one day, uh, we had the, had the stream project going behind the fire, it all went right out, and I talked to Patrick in the morning, and he said there was going to be a boil of water. I didn't get a boil of water call, so I, I notified him the very next morning when he went to work, I said, I never got, um, at my business, I never got one in the house, did you issue a boil of water? He said, the whole system. I said, well, I didn't get it, and I was telling people at work that day, and nobody else got it either. Um, so he said he checked with customer support there with their, that they use a service for that robo-call.
Right.
Um, to see what went on. Um, I suggested he reissue it, once he figured out what was going on. I know they posted it around town, I think a couple days after the fact, when they realized how many people didn't get it.
I mean, it's a pretty serious thing.
I heard that Houston people were getting their telephone calls for the boil of water.
He put it out for the whole system, including Houston.
Yeah, Houston, but why?
Some don't, some people don't.
I think that, I think the Houston system is done by Pen, through Penfield.
He turned it over to Patrick, submitted a letter, and I just got it, I came in, we all...
Yeah, I, I didn't...
He did say that they realized that a lot of people didn't get, uh, get the call, and they're gonna send out postcards to update the information on file. I told him, I would definitely check with the company, because, you know, as far as the legal hotel, that phone number's been the same since nineteen seventy-four. I had the same phone number in my house for sixteen years, and I've gotten every other call, at least I think I did, but maybe I didn't, um, so...
They should've just, they should've just put that phone and address changes on the bill, and then it's on there all the time, and they don't have to send out notes.
I don't honestly know what happened, he didn't offer an explanation of what happened, he said he's aware that people didn't get it, but I don't know if he talked to the robo-call company or not, you know, and it doesn't say in this letter that that's what he did, but I looked over really quickly, cause he said it was here on desk.
And we're still on that notices of valid, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the whole system?
I talked to him at the meeting, and we discussed that, and we wanted to know, I'd like you, my phone number hasn't changed in twenty-five years. And they don't know, they put it out, it didn't go out except to certain people, I never got it either, so, uh...
But the whole system's still on a boil notice now?
It is, because they had another break.
That's what I thought, I'm like, I don't follow.
Now, I got three calls.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, you got three? I got three calls with no statement.
Just to, just to tell you, no.
I just got, I picked the phone up, said hello, and got nothing but silence. About an hour, not even an hour later, same thing. And then the third time was pretty close to the second time, that I got the third one, and still nothing said, so, but...
Did it come up on your caller ID?
It comes up on a caller ID.
As J. Township Water Authority or...
Yeah, that's a strange number, you know, still three times, but, but I can tell you that I could hear clicking in the background, so I would say it was a software issue or, or whatever at the company that...
Right, also, I...
I mean, J. Township doesn't do that.
Right.
It, it's a, it's a hard...
Hard company.
Company.
But I said, I told him, I said, I offered him to even come down and check my caller ID, I checked all of the business and home, and we never got a call at all, you know?
Yeah, I got three, but there was nothing said.
Yeah, they're totally supposed to look into it.
Same Joe's, I didn't get a call either, either for the first break or the second.
Yeah, the terrorists didn't get a call, I know they were notified a couple days after the fact, so...
About three.
Now, I know the second break over there, that was on that trans light.
Right, but then they, they issued a boil water for the whole system after that break on Peach?
After...
Is it system-wide, cause I didn't get one out there either.
It was never opened up since last week. The boil water service...
Oh, it's still, still...
What he explained to us at the meeting is, it was on all week, cause he sent some tests in, and DDP said flush the lines again, and they flushed the lines again, but it was already on Friday, so nobody was gonna do any, uh, you know, checking for Saturday, Friday.
Saturday, I know, it is.
So by time Monday came, they're gonna, they've already flushed the lines, they're gonna take the samples back in, and this other break broke.
Is he doing the flush system-wide or just...
Oh, they had it, they flushed the whole system, as far as I know, that's what he told me. So anyways, it's supposed to be after this break, probably have to flush the lines again, send a test in.
Well, they probably won't have to flush the lines on that break, because they isolated that break. Although DDP said to, I'm pretty sure DDP said that they needed to have a system, leave, leave the boil water on.
Yes.
But they shut that off, BDP shut it off down on the shortcut, and then shut the cross off on Peach.
Well, one of these was not leaked, wasn't it, the fire hydrant malfunction?
Yeah, it was still a leak, the hydrant came right off the line.
Yeah, so it needs replaced.
It is.
It's already been replaced.
They worked until seven thirty that night and got it all back.
Yeah, this other one was, was the old trans light light that comes up from across the creek from Florida Beach.
And it's repaired now, the line on Peach?
Yes, as far as I know, it's repaired.
So they, but did he reissue a boil water for that?
No, still, from Peach.
Because the other one's still going.
Still going.
They didn't want him to issue another boil water, they...
Well, but then a good way to know if the spung system is, because...
Oh, you know, well, you can blame that one on DDP, that's, that's who...
That's what I suggested at the beginning of it to Patrick, I said, why don't you reissue the call, just to see if people get it, you know, what's going on with the problem?
I never got a call the first one at first, but I got a call day before yesterday.
That's when I got one.
Okay, so...
I am the next one, I have to find...
So maybe he did one after that break.
Well, I think he did, but I mean, it was under...
I still didn't get one, that's the case in other ways, so, something's wrong.
But I, but I didn't get one on the second one, apparently.
You...
On, on the second break Tuesday, I didn't get one either, but I wasn't out of water either.
No.
That one, I mean, that leak was an isolated leak from the shortcut to the, to the water.
Right.
Somebody has to call the company, so...
Well, they, but they supposed to be working on it, and I left Thursday, he was gonna contact wherever he had to to get this up and running and what he had to, and, and we made other suggestions to put it on the phone of the water authority and the, the office, the office and the plant. So if you do call, that will be on there, you know what I mean, if there's that, and you don't get the phone call, you can pick it up even on Sunday, and, and that receipt will be on there, you know what I mean, recording will be on there.
Well, and I saw them around town, post office and store and stuff, and I would even suggest maybe he uses a writer, piece of paper or something when he does that, cause it just looked like this, and if it wasn't right here in front of your face at the pharmacy where I saw it, I would never stop to read it, you know what I mean? If he made it something, it'd be a little more...
Like that paper right there.
Yeah, some, something that's gonna catch your eye or bigger lettering, and it's literally words like this, you can get something along with it.
I like that thing, that stands out more than a grin, right here in the swing in front of you.
Anything else? Let's go.
Uh, nothing for the time being, I'll comment later.
Jim? Anything else, any comments?
What are you talking to me?
Yeah.
I've got a lot of questions, but none of them that I need to delay to read with, so, uh, I will, I'll pass it on.
Okay, Keith? Linda?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, this is a nice letter that Stacy wrote here, and I agree, I agree with it, and, uh, how is it going with the, uh, merching?
Uh, I think it's on our own business when we get to it, and we can talk about that.
I'd like to make a comment, I feel Linda's done.
You got anything else, Linda?
Oh, I'll listen to gentlemen, see if I have...
Yeah, uh, I'd like to commend Patrick for what he's up against, he drives hard and he, he's got his head full, and he, he does a really good job, but there is times when you get overwhelmed with all kinds of things happening at once, and he's had his best, thank you, I'm proud of him.
Okay, good?
Yeah, he needs to, he and Justin need to learn the distribution system, so they know where to shut off that, uh, they did not have to shut down.
Well, like I said, a lot of that's revolving through the water, so it'll be here. Okay, Frank?
No, go ahead.
Good enough, Jim?
Uh, yeah, uh, first thing I'd like to know, why some contingency letters are brought to the board and others that are approached to the supervisors aren't? How do you guys make a selection, what is printed out on the board for people to read and what's not?
Correspondence here?
Yes, your correspondence letters, because there's been several correspondent letters that were sent to the supervisor and it was not brought to the meeting. How do you pick and choose on which ones?
The, the ones that Stacy, the ones that are here, he brought those in himself and...
There's been several that's been brought to the board and not been brought out to the public of the meeting.
You mean you're saying it's...
And secondly, too, it was brought to the supervisors that any water issues weren't gonna be discussed at, uh, supervisor's meeting, it was gonna be discussed at, uh, water board meeting.
The way I feel, ninety-nine percent should be at the water.
Well, why are we discussing, why is something like this, it's brought at the supervisor's meeting?
Yeah, but if you read the top of it, it is, it's health and safety, that's, that's a, it's an issue, it's an issue to the township if people aren't getting the water. Should be an issue to you as well, if people aren't getting that boil of water call.
Yes, this is one person's opinion.
That boil water call, Jeremy, is not their fault.
No, that's...
How did I say, I didn't say...
No, I know that, but your point, your finger at this has a part to do with it.
Exactly, you read this.
So he's asking why it's pertinent, and I said, it's, it's about health and safety.
I understand what he's saying, because the only letters that ever have been on that table since you've been supervisor is from Stacy Snyder, only, never, don't say it was ever...
Water board actually has letters that were sent about the water company, it was never brought to the meeting. So if you're gonna open it up with stuff like this, you should open it up to everybody.
Yeah, yeah, he brought the copies in for the public, we didn't make those calls.
Well, why didn't you make the decision not to bring this up to the meeting, like you do on the other stuff?
So what you're saying is, if I write a letter and bring them down here, it's good? Or Joe writes a letter, or Franny writes a letter, or whoever?
You're gonna bring all the letters from now on.
If it has something to do with what's going on and pertinent like this is?
I, no, I don't think you can pick and choose, Jeremy, I think it's pertinent that a correspondence that comes to the supervisor, it's addressed to the board of supervisors, is it not?
Right.
Okay? Then why wasn't it put on correspondence like everything else is? And I'm saying to you, the only two letters since I've been, since I've been a supervisor that have ever been here, or since I've been gone, has been the letters from Stacy Snyder, not another soul.
I think all letters addressed to J. Township Board of Supervisors should be private, they don't have to be discussed with the public.
No, they have to be correspondence, no, they have to be correspondence.
They can bring it up and talk about the issues, they don't have to say who they give it to.
Yes, they do.
All you gotta do is put a record to Austin, and I have to give you a copy of it, or you can look at it, but it's public knowledge.
It's public knowledge, you can't hide it.
Give me a check.
Do you have to give the person's name? I'm asking.
I know, we...
If they want, if it lists numbers...
But I'm not saying, I don't know, I don't say it.
How many times somebody even asked to have a letter?
Yeah, I'm like, that out, that was...
You can get a copy of others, I'd have to show you that.
Guys, these letters that have been put here for the, for the public meeting, these are the only letters that have ever been put there are from the same guy, nobody else. Any other writer that comes here goes to the board of supervisors and is put in your category on your agenda page, number seven, as correspondence. So then if we want a copy of that, we have to request a copy of that, right, of this?
Yeah, yeah, all I can tell you is he brings them in himself and asks them to...
Well, you need to...
Well, that's where the line should be drawn, that it's gotta be done one way or another.
Okay, so you're saying, okay, just, we have Stacy's letter, so, okay, we're correspondents, we received a letter, okay, from Nancy or from anybody.
Yeah, right.
They say, we, okay, so you want us to read the whole letter?
No, no, if somebody requests it as, as a record request, yes, you gotta give it to them, but it shouldn't be public knowledge. I'm not saying there's, this is rather wrong, when he's saying it, I'm not on the water board, but that's besides the point, some you publish here at the meeting and some you don't. That's what, excuse the French, pisses me off.
Well, I think something like this should be public knowledge.
In your view, we understand correspondence, but I'm telling you, if he brings a letter and his copies in, he asked it to be set there, I don't think there's anything offensive to anybody if you take the time to read it, it's a concern for the community over the boil of water. So if there was something inflammatory in there?
I didn't say inflammatory, I said, if you're gonna do it for one, you gotta do it for everybody, and you don't do that, you don't do...
Nobody has ever brought a stack of their own letters in and asked them to be sent out, other than Stacy Snyder, as long as I've been here.
And it's still...
It would be something you would look at to say, is this...
And you should've said, we don't do that as supervisors, we don't...
Okay, well, maybe when, if you're a supervisor someday, you can make that decision, or these guys can make that decision, but I don't see the problem with...
Any letters, if there comes...
It's, it's a, it's a community problem that we should all be concerned about, the boil of water and nobody getting the calls.
And, and what's your answer in the second part of the question, that we weren't gonna talk about the water company issues here, instead of having somebody go to the water board and, and discuss that with the water company?
I didn't ask any water issues, I asked why the robo-call...
I'm asking the supervisors.
The water company hasn't been holding public meetings for one, for two, this is still, like I said, a health and safety issue, the boil of water, that's why we're discussing it.
You have to go to YouTube to get a water authority meeting, cause they're, I'm kidding.
I just wondered why the robo-calls hadn't worked, that's all.
Well, that's, that's a legitimate question.
We, we didn't get a call either, and my wife's on the water board, we didn't get a call either.
So I don't care about the water authority, I just wanna know why the robo-call system didn't work.
Well, let me ask you, Jim, Franny's here, but, okay, all the five board members, they aware of the hydrant replacement? There was work done, was all five board members notified about that?
We were out of town.
Well, okay, you're out of town.
Half of Thursday, everybody knew, because we was at the meeting, and we was aware that nobody got the call, and we made suggestions on getting it fixed, getting it under controls, so that don't happen no more, hurry up and get them out, papers if you have to, get them out there... Hurry up and get them out, papers if you have to, get them out there faster, don't wait two days, get them out there.
Yeah, they got three guys up there right now for some, or they could have went around to the neighborhoods and hit a few houses and just asked people to cover it.
And if you watch the YouTube page, if you watch it on there, you're seeing that we expressed this issue pretty strongly about getting it fixed and getting it straightened out.
Yeah, the question is, at what point did the company know that the lines that the number didn't go through?
I told him, I told him, what day was it, right, Monday? Monday, I told him Tuesday morning, but I didn't receive anything.
Okay, so he knew Tuesday morning, and he did not know Monday, though. So people, people were drinking the water, watering it on Monday all day.
And really, until probably about Thursday, when you guess, a lot of people didn't know until it hit the internet. You know, or they saw it in the dollar market somewhere else, people were drinking it.
Can I, can I, one, one more comment, okay? If someone sends a letter here, okay, and if you announce that it exists, you don't have to read it, all you have to do is announce it exists. Okay, then if I want to, I can, I can request it.
Right, right.
Okay, that's really simple.
Yeah, that's all simple, isn't it?
We do, if you hand deliver it, Jamie stamps it when received, or we get it through the post office, everything we give is always staffed with the HPC. Like I said, if we put it on the agenda, if we fill a whole page, we have the correspondence.
Understand that, understand that.
If you want, if you want a copy of it, request, I can give you a copy. And if, if it comes in on time, if you won't see Patrick's or Stacy's list, is this, oh, there is, this is listed.
No, that's not there.
Oh, that's a different one, okay, so there. But there was not busy, and that's.
I understand that, Jeremy, but it's not laying on the table, addressed to you guys.
Well, we don't.
It's not, you know, you wanna address it to the public, it should be addressed to John Q. Public, it shouldn't be addressed to the J Township Board of Supervisors. So under this addressment, it should be correspondence on your.
That they received or.
On your feed seven, yes.
Well, they said quarters laying them out, and we think you'll see this meeting that. He's like, no. Okay.
Thank you, make that motion.
Thank you.
Come on, vote. I didn't, you don't need to vote on that. Well, Jamie, don't you put it to me for that?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of comments, no questions really, just comments, and I do not want to, anybody to take offense to what I'm gonna say, hopefully, but. Yeah, I lived here since eighty-five, neither more like where I were born and raised here, so. Ben explained to me a few times through the years, you know, you're really an outsider, well, that's fine. But being an outsider, I, maybe I'm the most qualified person to say, this has been going on for years. We're gonna plug in, I assume the whole objective here is we're gonna plug in a new person into the water plant over there, and that's fine. But the problems are gonna remain, just a different name attached to the problem. At the, I attended the last meeting, I attended, it was in late, late winter, maybe February, big audience that day. And there were four engineers in this little room, four, about four different tradesmen, and that's just what I knew of the people. So there's a bait, there's most, a most definite talent pool here in J Township, if you lean on it, use it, you'll solve your problems. I mean, if we're gonna bicker about points that have been a point for thirty years, they've been solved anyway. Secondly, as far as the robo call, I, I'm trying to become a census enumer, US Census enumerator. And I was calling them until about this time Tuesday night, till I got an answer. The US Census has major problems with their call, their automated calling system. It's not just J Township one, the US Census, I mean, I, I was supposed to be somewhere yesterday, waiting on a phone call, I made, I made several phone calls, and then finally, at seven thirty, somebody down at the state college office says, all your names been kicked on to a different list, and they'll call you in the near future. Well, so I guess the point is, you know, I don't know if you've followed for the robo call here in the township, but it's, US Census had it up till Tuesday, so. I guess the basic message is, use your talent, don't, there's definitely a talent pool here, use it.
It sounds like.
Up until, go ahead.
It sounds like the systems are being hacked.
I don't.
To make them non-functional.
Why would you go and go to a red?
Okay, let's get that one.
No, I'm not sure what took place many years ago, when the water authority was formed, but way back, there were small groups of people wanting to hook on with the St. Mary's water system. A lot of people wanted independence from St. Mary's, well, consequently, if it gets done, fast forward till a few years ago, I guess there was a thought about maybe, St. Mary's Water Authority, and they basically, figuratively speaking, it set their middle finger and said, if you want your independence, you got it. So I still think it wouldn't be a bad idea if everybody's uptight about operating a local water authority. If it goes to something like American Water Company, my mom and my brother have, have that in, down in Aquarium, and their waters, I like my water a hell of a lot better, and it's a lot cheaper. So we're this close to the, to the apex of this hill, I'd say we go together and get up there to the top.
Just back up, you said four engineers, was that at the water meeting? You went to come in here, it was four engineers?
Yes, there were four engineers, the, four engineers that I know.
At the water meeting?
No, no, at the, at the supervisor, in this room.
He means sitting in the audience, that was referring to, they were sitting here? As, as a visitor, they weren't here in official capacity at any time.
They were here in the room.
But I mean, they were engineers from a firm.
No.
No, they're just our residents that sit here. I'm wrong, I'm trying to think, where we had Eads in here, where somebody, okay.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, I'm.
Okay, thank you, Bobby?
Yeah, I have, I guess four things here, first of all, the matter of placing the letters here for public consumption. Jeremy indicated if they weren't appropriate, you wouldn't put them out there. Now, that's the way it came across to me, and he's saying he thought this was for the public good. But to reach that decision, this board consists of three individuals, three supervisors. Did all of you three put input on that this was appropriate to set this letter up? Because you're saying a very dangerous precedent, that somebody could come in and just lay letters out, and they're there for public consumption. So my first question is, did all three of you agree this letter was appropriate for public consumption?
I don't, the only thing I feel is later, you know, the task that.
That's what I feel, too.
From now on, I mean, I'm not.
I, I don't think you should permit people to come in here, if they wanna live them out outside, or they wanna give them out personally, that's one thing that you can't control. But you can control what goes on that table.
Well, they decided already, they're not gonna put anything else on there from now on. Well, they just said it.
It has to go through the township.
Why must the bad meeting, the.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm going with that. I agree, yeah.
Okay, so, second question is, I submitted an open record request, and it was to the effect that you had requested the letters from the, to authority boards, the members, as to their position with regards to their community authority. But it went on to state, and any other documents you have related to the merger. Now, I was provided with the letters from the authority board members, but I was not provided with a letter from the, from the attorney. Now, there's no pending litigation, this is a community activity here to try and understand the pros and cons of merging the authorities. I don't see.
Let's, well, right here, it's under own business?
No, this is visitors' comments. My open record request is not under own business.
When we bring that up, then no more talking.
Can I, can I answer, Bob? We have a memo from the solicitor that was provided on the thirteenth, that would, that you can get a copy of, okay? What we had when you made the request was back and forth correspondence that not only involved that particular item, but also some of these issues we're having with the ordinance and et cetera, so we did not have an official, anything to give you under back and forth correspondence from the solicitor.
Do you, when you have questions for the solicitor, do you send them on the letter?
Email.
Email.
Email, okay, so then I can ask for copies of those emails?
I don't know if you'll get them, depending on what the solicitor says is the, you know, your right to have and not have, you can't have all things from the solicitor, you know that, I know that.
Well, it depends what the subject matter is, I mean, yeah, if it's pending litigation for somebody in violation of an ordinance, that should be redacted.
But.
But if it's something pending.
For your request and the water authority and others, we have a memo wrote up, so that you'll have the information that you're asking.
Okay, but I'm going to come back here and ask for all emails.
Well, you're just gonna cost us money with this solicitor, and make sure with this solicitor that what we can and can't give you.
What would be a publicistic, get it on the emails, what is it you wanna know?
I wanna know what questions are being asked, so I better understand the issue.
Well, we hired them to ask those questions. Well, we hired them to, we, we have them here to ask questions.
This is a representative government with public participation.
But there's could be stuff that, from our solicitor, we might just say, okay, cloud thirteen.
Oh, no, you don't do, so that's a race like that.
You don't for help me pick one.
No, you don't, away. That's illegal as hell.
I don't throw it away.
I certainly.
I'm observing clients personally, but it's all here, Bob.
It's here.
Okay, I'm going to come down and ask for it.
And you may or may not get it, it's all there.
Then we'll go from there, we'll go from there. Okay, but you say, now I can have the thing I was denied?
We, it's on, I don't even know, is it on the correspondence?
No, I haven't.
The memo, okay. Yes, you were not denied that, that is, this is new as of July the thirteenth, we requested it for not only you, the water authority, and other people seeking that information.
Okay, well, I get that, too, do I have to put an open records request, or is it gonna be?
I'm just gonna give you one after the meeting, you can even, I'm already.
Right here.
Whatever. Okay, next, my correspondence, Christine DeOzzy sent this board an email with some questions. I don't see it on correspondence.
That's because my meeting packet was already done before I got it, because I only got it today.
You only got the letter today, yesterday?
You might need to pack it for it on Monday.
Yeah. That's the sixteen, this dated the sixteenth, probably.
So then it doesn't get included?
Not when you send it. There's comments. The, the morning, yeah, it's a visitor's comment anyway from the subject, but not when you send it today, Patrick's letter isn't included in correspondence either, Stacy, because they all came today.
Well, then they're included in next month.
They'll be listed next month, that's what she does when they come in today, I'll put a list in the next month.
Okay, and one last thing, not only do I make open records requests here, I do it to water authority and get information here, but on visit to the water authority, I was shown a file of open requests, open records requests that were from Stacy Snyder and Jim Hop, and its volumes, and this has only happened since the, since they quit, which was last October. And I think for the education to everybody, yeah, we see a little window right here with Stacy's letter, and I'm not saying it's not, yeah, but to see the whole spectrum, and I don't even see the whole spectrum, there's a lot more going on than what meets the eye to the general public. That's all I'm gonna say, and I encourage people who have rights to see these letters, you have rights to see anyone's open records request, so exercise your rights and get informed. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sorry, I thought they were.
It's all right, we just got to you anyhow, be right on the time.
I had just a couple of questions, I was wondering what the hearsay, I think that's what I'm coming to ask. So the accident that caused the line, the fire hydrant, what happened, was that from the fire department that actually hit that?
Yes, they was come back after they had a tractor trailer fire, they were come back to refuel, reload the tanker, and when they opened it up to flush, they closed, they opened it again evidently, well, there's one bolt holding the whole thing on the main line there.
So does that come out of our township funds to pay for that, when the township was down there fixing it, or does that come out of the fire department's taking that?
I, I could tell you how that goes, and in act of an emergency, we have the right to use, or a fire call, we have the right for public water, because it's an emergency use. So that was a call, and they're coming to fill their truck up with water, that's an emergency use, so. The fire department already has an agreement with the water company, in case of emergency, to use the water, free the water.
I wasn't speaking about the water itself, I was speaking about how the, how, with it being broken, you know, does the fire department, does the fire department go ahead and case for that to be fixed, or is that coming out of the funds from our township to fix that?
The water authority.
Water Authority owned it, the hydrant.
Yes, their infrastructure has failed, it was probably there for twenty-five years, the bolts wrapped it out. And what's happening? The best thing, it did happen then, instead of saying a structure nearby was on fire, and it happened.
It was gonna happen.
So he's probably better off it did happen, and.
It was gonna happen anyways, because the boats, like you say, they rust off, they have the same thing over here a few years back, they rust off, next thing, they blow up.
Meanwhile, I have reconstruction, I understand.
Excuse me, your name again?
April Odenbach.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then my other one was, so how long are we supposed to be watching with a blue notice, like I wasn't even, I didn't even get any notice, so this week, and I know that we're not at the water authority meeting, but I was just wondering.
Like we just discussed it here a little bit ago, every, we just discussed it. We, he, when I was at the meeting on Thursday, he figured by Tuesday, but then they had another water break, so they just didn't open it up, and they got the other one fixed, so I'm thinking by the, the end of, you know, this week here, it should be opened up.
So what can now?
They're probably waiting for their test back from D P, when that's, you're, then it'd be opened out, I hope their phones work.
Two clear days of testing, two days of clear testing, and then it'll be lifted. And when it's lifted, do they put a call out to let them know?
Yeah, how are we supposed to know?
Well, I, I will, I'm gonna personally call them tomorrow and ask them if it's listed or not, and, and if, if the phones don't work, they're gonna have to go out with them signs and put them up.
And a lot of people still think that, or a lot of people think it's open, it's based on, but I, that's the, they, they will put a call at the end thing.
Well, I've got much years past, I've seen it like at family doll or something, and I didn't even see one there.
Yeah, I think there is.
I think it tested positive for COVID.
The ones I was ever going to tell to that family doll, and so I didn't even see one this time.
They're supposed to have them out there right now, in different places.
Like I said, I mean, I, I mean, we're beating the heck out of the robo call, but, you know, that's out of the water company's hands, they just have to.
I don't want anybody pointing fingers, I'm just saying, there was, you know, there's definitely an issue to be addressed.
It is to be addressed.
Anything else, April?
No.
Okay, good, then we're gonna move on to approval of the bills?
What's the, uh, Martin Davis now, with the fittings for the truck? What they are?
Uh. Fittings for truck number six, we do here now. Oh, um, is truck number six the newest one we got? I don't even know what number six would be, must have been the newest truck, I don't remember, it's having a number six. Um, they're gonna get different fittings to make the, the chip, the chip spread.
Oh, the car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're gonna replonex the hook, the chip rope.
Well, I gave you the same to there, but I gave you a couple of years ago, you know, and I stock all that stuff.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know who went and took care of it, or anything like that.
We can just mention Rogue Foreman, I mean, at the same time, around the same areas, and, I mean, right across town, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do stock lots of hydro.
I mean, I wouldn't knock it, this oxygen is about ten times cheaper than the stuff that you got at the lot. So if you don't really know any of your oxygen, it's kind of filled up again, that turns possibly the whole lot cheaper than what you were getting.
Yes, I mean, Rogue Foreman usually only takes care of stuff like that, which we can mention here, any other questions on bills?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions to react, uh, St. Mary's water, fire.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions to, uh, say there is water, fire hydrants.
That's the one out in Robin Road, two of each township.
Should be two like that.
One hundred and one and twenty-five cents.
It's got four. Every three months.
Every. Okay, the next question was, uh, this asphalt company here in Midland, asphalt off? Uh, forty-five thousand, four oh six thirty. How many gallons was that?
Twenty thousand more or less, that's what we bid on, yeah, we were pretty close, I mean, that's what we actually set forty-five thousand aside in budget for that.
So, it's like what, it was two fifty dollars or some, two something?
Yeah. Two dollars and eight cents a gallon, or something like that was.
Little shit called it, like, well, from the thing is, is that big truck or from the brush trucker, if you can oil it great, there's two streets up Cleveland Street, all the way down Cleveland Street where she can go and spray the fenders out.
Now they got Lincoln Teddy.
Got Lincoln?
Yeah. They can't find a ranch to tighten it.
Oh, okay.
Well, really? You can make them guy.
They said it's nineteen seventeen, that's why they told me.
Yeah, you can make the red cheese.
Do you have one later?
I probably know.
I don't know.
Say that's hurt better.
Yeah, I don't know, I have an inch and a half, I know Gunner mentioned it to me.
I thought you were gonna wear off the pump.
I didn't get your punch.
Huh? It's probably not that big yet.
They said it was an inch, nine sixteen.
Yeah, I got, I got stuff up there to four and a half.
Yeah, we gotta live it.
Okay, well, you got your four of them. I got one other question, uh, the cetera glass, is that that stuff for cleaning up?
We even over leave.
On the pepper chemical supply. Yeah, I can take.
Yeah, cetera glass, it's, um.
For cleaning your oil and off of vehicles.
Right, yeah, it's like a, it's like a big drop when it's all on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's all.
Smells like a woman.
Yes, and it's environmentally safe.
Yeah, I know, they used to be called a different name.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All of you favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to pay the bills. Code Mount one oh three, five oh nine, seven seven. Okay, correspondence, or, sorry, pleasure to be here.
The general fund's talking about as of June eighteenth was one hundred ninety-seven thousand, nineteen dollars, ninety cents. As of July sixteenth was two hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred eighty dollars, forty-one cents. State fund's balance as of June eighteenth was two hundred seventy-one thousand, two, yeah, two hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred nine five dollars. Balance as of July sixteenth is two hundred twenty thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars, forty-seven cents. Playa's balance as of July sixteenth, thirteen thousand, nine eighty-eight. Temple Reserve was twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Balance as of July sixteenth was under twenty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-three. State fund's CD balance as of July sixteenth was forty thousand, four hundred ninety-eight. General fund's CD balance as of June sixteenth was eighty-four thousand, eight hundred seven dollars. And the total deposits for the month were seventy thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and twenty cents.
Any questions on? Yeah, uh, I see on your, your insurance for the gate. What, is it just gate down here, or?
No, no, the one up here that we put on to go.
Oh, I'm here, I'm here.
Somebody drove into it.
Oh, no.
It's all up, so we got reimbursed, and we're having, we don't have the new one in yet.
No.
But they're building a new one.
Okay, and what you thought it so bad, we couldn't straighten it out, so. You mean that? Reimbursement for tar and chip was?
Um, well, the last buck camp on the road, and then Petey DeLuca did from the bridge and spring run down the clinic road, like fourteen hundred feet, where he has driveway and piece of property. Just on the road, no. Driving circle.
Yeah, there's one of them, I actually, yeah, sewage pit.
I don't, no, I think that's all. Is not anybody else buy additional, or there others was bought?
Sewage authority, um, Arizona Rock Hill, there's one more.
Yeah, I knew the sewage authority, I just, I just, I didn't think, that just seemed awful high for a couple of.
The one that Petey DeLuca was like twenty-four hundred.
Yeah, he did fourteen hundred feet, because he didn't wanna get his truck there.
That was a guy, Robert. He wanted to get my truck, I didn't know.
Hey, I'm helping you, I need you every day.
Any correspondence?
Jay Township Water Authority meeting minutes, Jay Township Sewer Authority meeting minutes, Joey Burry, U.P., Sewer Force, Outcoming Commissioners meeting minutes, Jim Huff, um, copied on letter to Water Authority, Stacy Snyder, copied letter to Water Authority, and Jay Township Water Authority, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, well, the road maintenance equipment maintenance list, the truck form, the road master is.
I will say, um, it's not listed here, but we're talking road maintenance, um, the top half of Caledonia, the Caledonia Road is gonna be paved in the next couple of weeks. Uh, they're gonna do a little base repair, scratch and level, and then, uh, inch and a half of, uh, layering course on top of that E Q T, they're removing their bond, uh, they agreed to that. So.
How much are they putting on it there?
A total of two inches, that's just, plus the base repairs.
Okay, well, I was gonna ask that question, I forgot when you brought it up, I was up there the other day.
Yesterday.
You got some sections that are gapping in the middle from, and, and you got water under, so you know what's gonna happen if you don't, it's not marked for repair.
No.
So, you might wanna get up there and, and drive that, because in the middle where there's some, they're about four to six inches long, they're about two inches wide. And you know the water's already down in there, it's already separated, so it comes time and freezes, comes winter time, you know what's gonna happen to that, so.
Yeah, Dan and I were up, and I actually did the whole road, uh, after E Q T marked it, and we discussed that with them, so they know that, uh, those exist there, we marked them out, what is, this might be gone by now.
Yeah.
But they're, they're gonna take care of anything like that, and then.
Okay, also, also they tell you that when they give the last paving job on that road, the inside curve, uh, from shutters.
Mm-hmm, the sharp one.
The sharp turn, that was paved to the bank originally, so you might wanna go through and clean it up.
No, no, we already discussed that too, about that being, they, they, we wiped it out when we had to repair it there on the paved job, uh.
No, when, when I, when I was on there, originally paved that the first time. That was paved because people, and I might remember.
They were continent.
They were continent, so we paved all the way over because it, it didn't, otherwise it just turned into a mud, a pit. Now, what you're gonna have is the, the base is all blacked up, and it's good, but when they paved it the last time, they just left that lip, and you, 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 it's been putting gravel on it, and it'll never stain on that blacked up.
We haven't even, we haven't even put gravel on it, it's just with washing down the hill, I think, but I, we addressed that with.
Because before that turn, there's a catch, there's a catch basin right there.
Right.
That probably needs cleaned out to catch all that, but that was paved to the bank to, to alleviate that problem, and it's, it made it nice for, when, you know, for traffic to be able to move right over and get a run of curbs.
Yeah, it's been discussed already, and when the paper gets in touch with us prior to it, we're gonna discuss some of that stuff with them again as well. I just wanna bring it out to people, because we're gonna do a full lift, to get rid of that center seam as well, so there will be some rerouting of traffic, but it's probably in the next two to three weeks.
Well, like I said, I look down through there, because you got some blisters that are gonna come back and bite you in short order.
That's the first thing they're gonna do when they come in, so.
You know, on our, on our street.
Yeah, the white marks we put out there and not, so.
Yeah.
We always have the issue with the drainage on our street, that it's like going into the street instead of down to, um, the one that's gonna make me to where the crate is, the water. I don't know if there's a way to deter it or whatever, like usually we go out, I would shovel, have to make like a trench almost, way in our yard, and then down below me, to get the water to go there.
That was a few years ago, wasn't it?
Was it?
I'll, I'll.
Pipe road.
You got a pipe road a couple of years ago.
That was in, yeah, that was in my driveway, when I was staying.
This is the street drainage, you're saying?
Yes, the street drainage, so instead, it's like the, just, the water just goes right straight on to the road instead of into where the drainage system should go be going. You know, other than.
Well, that's, that's, I take a look, might need paper to off.
So, like when winter comes, it's just my, I don't know. Winter comes, it's just a nice ice skating rink, it is enjoyable, but you know, people cars don't.
No. No, I'm, I'm, I'm for the guys, so.
Okay, let's move on to old business, there's one, funding issues currently run?
Sure, the projects that we had funding for have been completed, um, and as well as the fire company, which was a part of the project, but was probably completed at the same time. Um, we're applying for reimbursement, uh, from the Fish and Boat Commission from grant money, and as long as they're gonna go smoothly, we're gonna attempt to reapply for another round, which, like last half of the year, have to get from start to finish on that, but. Um, they did say if, if everything went to their, their liking, that they would fund, fund the other half of the project, but they only funded half of this project at the beginning. So, we're gonna attempt it anyway, see how it goes.
Well, while you're looking, when you get a hold of those guys, uh, over there on the Redwood Bridge, the, the big bridge, you're starting to develop a gravel bar. Uh, and I think it's because of, uh, that, I think there's some debris that they had ended that, there was some trees and stuff down there, I don't know if they're still there or not, but I think, if you look on the low side, you're starting to develop a long trail gravel bar that was never there.
Um.
I don't know if it's really trouble or not.
I think we have the projects planned to go with the rest of that funding, but it could be something to look at, maybe try to add in.
Well, it could be, here, it could be something that you guys, because you guys have a lot of fix.
Right.
Fifty feet above and below your bridge, I'm just saying, you know, look at it, but you can go down in there and fix it easy enough.
Right, yeah, if it's a tree or something in the layer.
One more, yeah.
Okay, next, combining water and sewage boards, uh, we have a memo from our attorney about process combining the boards, and I said, Bob, there's coffee, anybody else? Need to, what we do, now we need to set up a date for a workshop between both boards, and far as this limited, which I'm sure junior trustee, we can get a use of the fireball, as, bring it up to the two more trustees. No, send the fireball letter, that way I won't forget. Okay, but till, once we find a date, so, Granny, you get with your board, Keith? I mean, I'm not, we're probably already get everybody there.
Is that meeting gonna be open to the public?
Yeah, has to be.
Has to be.
Okay.
So, get that.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna list it in the paper?
Has to be.
You're gonna put it in the paper?
Yeah, once we get a date.
I was just asking.
Soon as you get a date, just let me know.
You, you wanna let the boards, uh.
Try to pull me a time.
I'm, I'm gonna speak suggestion, suggest to you that the boards have their meeting to determine what their schedule is.
They just talked about, did any?
It's been developed, our meeting extended.
Okay, I'll let them board, Granny.
Yeah, we sent the letters back, saying that they need to know more about it, more or less.
And just so you guys knew though, I did send, I did send the letter back to you, but it obviously, somebody didn't give it to somebody.
Oh, I don't know which one we.
No, I forgot that one.
I, oh, yeah, I know, but I, I, I did, put one in.
Do you want?
For a response to you guys.
Say, hey, talk to board members, come up with a date, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, so we can sit down and have a workshop, but we discussed that at the last meeting, and then we were gonna look for possible dates, but we've kinda gotta.
But like I said, we've sent.
Take some dates.
Well, I understand, I understand, you know, uh, I mean, this is the sixteenth, you know, the, the meetings are gonna roll around a corner here pretty doggone quick for.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what I would say, it's your next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
And maybe by our next meeting, we can lock down a date to.
Yeah.
Have a workshop about it, yeah.
Yeah, you guys, let's assess the liabilities of each board, uh, each, each organization, and where you, how, how do you, uh, how, how do you want to determine whether, uh, connecting these two boards is, is, is a good plan? I, it's the last time we're talking about living in an township office here, okay, on collection, you know. Let me, let me preface this, okay, with, I have other customer, okay, I mean, they don't have the right to say this, okay? What, what I'm, what I'm looking at is that if you, uh, brought them both in here, okay, do you have different collection base? Uh, and do you have different quarters, like, like, for instance, uh, like the.
Waters due quarterly, sewage is due monthly, to answer your question.
What do you do, what thing?
Sewer, the sewer is monthly, and the water is quarterly bill.
Okay, and, and, and you're, you're, what's your, uh, what's your monthly sewage bill?
What does it cost?
Yeah, what's it?
Base rate is fifty-three fifty.
Pardon?
Fifty-three fifty.
A month?
Yep.
That's the basic rate.
That's your basic.
Then your third month, they adjust if you go over a usage, and you pay it even more. Seven dollars and fifty cents per thousand gallons over.
Fifty-three fifty.
Over nine, yeah.
And you're suing.
Yep.
Wow.
Like I said, it's.
I mean, that's about average for the area anymore, though, it really is fifty dollars a month, or, it's gone up considerably.
Okay, and your water?
Water, I'd say the average customer around, around about a hundred dollars a quarter, roughly.
Way more than that, you're making that.
I think the average is about a hundred dollars per, like an average household, I run higher than that, in my household, four, and my businesses.
I use eleven thousand gallons, a hundred a quarter.
Is it really?
Yeah, just pay, I'm just building on the jack of my truck.
Well, I don't have too many to go over other than my house, and I know my house is at least that high.
Mine's a hundred dollars.
Average customer is probably using about six to eight thousand, the average. Because we have a lot of older, single, you know.
Well, single person.
Yeah.
There's only two of us.
The average, yeah, yeah.
Two, and we.
But you got a garage, and you wash things, trucks.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
I still wash the trucks. Alright, it's cheap, listen, it's cheaper for me to send the truck over to the truck version, Brookville, than it is the worship here. It's cheaper.
Really?
Cheaper.
I think my question with Jerry, with the water building.
Yeah, if you're going.
And, and, and you go in May, and force in, in July, so you have a cost of full income, or do you just do one billing for the quarter?
We do one, one billing, uh, system wide.
For the entire contract.
Yeah, the entire contract, well, the entire customer base.
Yeah.
Everybody gets their bill at the same time, yeah.
I was just wondering, how do you manage the dashboard?
We're, like I said, Jamie will email both secretaries, we'll get a coordinator's reach forward, we'll get something put together, do a workshop, see the pros and cons, we'll go from there.
And we can send a copy of this memo to both boards.
She already did.
And I'm gonna give my copy to Bob, or you can get a fresh copy if you have the one that's been on the same thing.
Here, I mean, that, that memo is like that.
Okay.
But that's still pretty doggone vague when you pick up the whole Municipal Authorities Act to read it. I, I understand that, Terry, I'm not originally a attorney, but if you read the whole Authorities Act, that's a snippet, and that snippet mostly is for school.
Okay.
Like I said, this, we get this workshop, we go from there on that.
How does both organizations feel about this combining? What kind of response are you getting from, uh, water and sewage?
We got a couple knows and a couple interested so far, we didn't get responses from everybody. Well, I'd say that the flood authority seem more interested in it than the water authority, uh.
We only got one response from the sewer authority. One.
One, okay.
But I mean, I put one in, and I, I'll tell you what my answer was, my answer was, uh, the timeframe that we had on the sewer authority to answer you guys was just, you know, was no time. From.
I, I don't know when we.
They had it, they.
We had like four days.
Yeah, you had it way before that.
So.
So.
Looks like we.
Apparently that's on your end of the, of the, you pitched it to him, because we sent it out after our meeting. Jamie said it would've been, you just didn't get it to, to you and your, your people, it's, it didn't go.
I didn't get, oh, wait, don't push it on me, I didn't.
No, no, I'm saying, well, it didn't leave your office to the board members, but it was already.
Well, I, it was about four days before your meeting when we go.
But most likely, we're looking probably towards the end of August, so, at least a month out, at least, so.
Some of the things that can be discussed in the workshop, when people come in with an open mind, you know.
Okay, we're gonna move on, we got the Caledonia Pipe Bridge, uh, far as that, the grant is due on September thirtieth.
And Eames is working on the grant.
Engineering's taking.
Um, I did talk to Brian here today that, uh, water authority was having their bid meeting, or, you know, you had your contractors in here from the water authority, I don't know if it was a bid meeting, I guess it was. But Brian from Eames, he said that, uh, D C E B did wave all match this year.
Oh, yeah?
So if we did, we won't have to come up with a match from the town. Now, that being said, we said there's some other things that we can do if the county can still give us that after team money to even extend the life of the rail a little further. But he said that's not, wait and see if we get the money from D C D is gonna be the kicker, because we're not gonna win the county money otherwise, so.
Okay. Uh, next is the D C N R to Caledonia Pike Road turnover. Uh, solicitor sent an ordinance to D C N R for their lawyers to look over, being taken back from D C N R.
How much money are you gonna get?
How much we're gonna get, and how much we're gonna lose by January.
Well, that's the question.
Forty-five hundred.
That's what.
How much I'm gonna get?
That's, that's my fuel money, as well, it would be forty-five hundred.
How much are you gonna get?
From D C N R?
Yeah.
It's their property.
Their property.
They owe it, really isn't it?
Yeah, they own both sides, they own the whole.
The only both sides, they don't own the road, right?
Right, actually, um, we've been wanting to give it back to them for a while, Keith, you know, when Nightmare Our Section of the Bike is out there, and we throw, throw stone, and throw stone, and throw stone, and it disappears every year.
Yeah. Yeah, I argue that, but it was maintained like, like it should have been, I mean, we put.
And in the same condition since I turned sixteen, I can.
No, it hasn't, no, it hasn't, Jeremy, because I'm telling you right now.
It's been.
Uh, Lockavich and I went out there, we stumped both sides of that, we cut the banks back, we seeded all that, and we put like sixty-eight thousand dollars of FEMA money in that, so don't tell me.
And I understand, I remember seeing the lights coming out there, but it's gone, there's no law.
Everybody kept, kept up with it.
Kept throwing sixty-eight thousand dollars out?
No, you don't have to throw sixty-eight thousand dollars at all.
We put a lot of money into it.
A lot of that is sixty-eighting to save our streets in town.
We put four thousand dollars a year in stone to just to watch it disappear, just to fix the rocks and the bad spots every year.
Yeah, it's so bad, it's down to the logs.
In a rock.
Yeah, it's down to the rock, and right underneath the rock is, is a cornerstone.
Yeah, the lawn, that's what I said, it's a cornerstone lawn.
It's cornerstone here, I mean, that's what that is.
Hey.
Okay.
It's not our problem anymore if this goes through.
So we're gonna, okay, we're gonna move on, uh, ordinance update. Uh. We actually, one, two, three, four, five, we sent five letters out to certain properties, individuals. These letters, fifteen days, will be up on July eighth, which was over a week ago.
One, two, two, um, actually comply with Ramon, Ramon Grass and Cleanups.
Yeah.
Um, Steel Round Plum, they did some cleanup, they did come in and get a driveway permit, registered driveway permit, so they wanna meet with us, um, to discuss the rest of it. Um, which is, I know there's, some of that stuff they're going, putting on the building, but I think that's what he wants to discuss.
Well, far as two, I think we want all three of us when we do meet with them, we don't wanna do anything one-on-one.
Absolutely, and that's the same thing the guy, it's about.
We scan for something after you get home, guy, in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said afternoons work best for them, um, Plum, and if you probably do both in one day, they're the, the other one that wants to meet in person.
Where are you at with the junkyard license?
Uh, I haven't got that far yet, I mean, we got this far, Franny has been really trying hard this year.
Well, I wanna know that too, because it doesn't take anything to send out the first notice for something.
They've already.
We sent first notice out on a lot of those.
On the junkyards?
Yeah.
Yes, but not, not, we have not reissued them yet, okay?
Well, that's, that's not good.
What's the lawyer saying?
If we're gonna follow the procedure, we need to follow the procedure.
For everybody, yes.
And where's the code enforcement officer?
We're trying to get one.
See, too much time's going by, that's not right, they've waited this long for a code enforcement officer. Now, this is something I'm upset about.
I think a lot of people's getting upset.
I think it'd be a lot easier with an enforcement officer.
And the people will be there in the corner, okay, they've had four months of nice weather. If they have to have new people go tell them what to do, then they have a problem in their minds. Because anybody can look at that and see what needs done over there.
Well, the same.
And none of it takes any money, so.
The same vehicles the officer was tying and not her parked there all the time, so I, you know, there's always.
And that's the other thing, they're, they're on the road half the time parked.
Right, well, they, they, they did move all of that, that's been something that.
They were on the road too when I came over here.
Did you guys get a phone call?
Has either of you guys been in the picture for a code enforcement officer?
No, I would say that, that'd be something that we would like.
Well, you guys last night, are we gonna use somebody part-time from another town?
We tried that to.
Well, we will, once, we were using one of them if we had somebody here, and they were gonna more or less kinda train them and show them what to, how they do another Saint Mary's doable. But we need somebody that wants to do it.
Well, you gotta do them all, you can't just pick and choose who you wanna do, and that's where you're at.
Gotta get the word out, put it in the paper.
Seven months, and you're right back where you was before, you don't got nothing done.
But that's what I said after the last meeting, I said, it's probably time to advertise just to see what.
I'm not saying you just have it done any say, because you've done a lot.
We'd raise it up to all of our enforcement, our code enforcement people to see if anybody.
Those.
Those people are whatever even on the mess, or, or a fine or something.
Well, they just moved one jump to another yard.
That's ridiculous, it's ridiculous.
I'm sorry, that was precious property, they moved from one side to the other.
Right, so, point being, yes, we need an enforcement officer, I totally agree, because this is just a runaround, and the next step is going to court, giving a fine, it's not gonna remedy the problem, you know, it's just, I agree. You guys wanna advertise for a code enforcement officer?
Yeah, you gotta do everybody the same, you're sending out.
And the brick house on the floor is starting to be a safety hazard because it's gross.
That one, we did have our building inspector working on, but he just dropped out the face of the earth.
Well, there's a sign on the front.
That's, that's sheriff's sale.
Yeah, it's up for sheriff's sale.
Um.
Now, I heard word for somebody, something was happening with that building, I don't know if somebody bought it, or somebody's tearing it down, the brick house.
Rico's old building store.
No, it's not.
What is it, somebody bought it, or somebody?
Or that, no.
Well, it's up for sheriff's sale, and they didn't have to sell yet.
I know, you know, you could sign it, but I'm pretty sure somebody bought it.
I think it was in the paper today, as a matter of fact, when I read the paper, Jimmy, I read something in there about all the tax claim things.
Yesterday's, Daily Press?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was in yesterday, there's a couple of properties down here.
Right.
Okay, I'm not being mad.
I make motion to be advertised for a code enforcement officer.
I, I think, I think we've been advertising one of the things you should probably write a job description. Put it on paper, because there's somebody to, to, to apply, because you don't want somebody who's retired from school and is such great applying to the job, you know.
No, that's what the interview process is for, but it will, it will be explained in the advertisement what it is, it won't just be a.
And actually, I'm, I'm not saying for sure, the one from Sandy Township was terminated. To the Thanksgiving Catholic's name is.
Okay.
He was terminated from Sandy, got rid of him.
So we want him, they fired him, we want him?
Well, the reason was, he showed his, he had his neighbor's house, so we drive that.
No, well.
Yeah.
I think we were.
God wants to be a little, yes.
All right, well, advertise and see if you plot it, and one, two, whatever.
Okay, we're into the new business. Uh, assessment permit. There, what we got? Uh, Gary and Janet Leachy?
Leggett.
Leggett? I'm blocking out here. Twenty-two, four, nine, Caledonia Pike Road, weed bill, uh, rebuilding, contract rebuilding contractors, we're, uh, let's put a nine by eighteen building up type construction addition, one who grew on to their residence. Uh, no existing water, on block seven.
Yeah, there's a water source.
I'm having a little work now, the rest is.